Good morning, and welcome to the January 27, 2025 City Council and Urban Renewal Agency Meeting. Thank you for joining us in this hybrid meeting format. Anyone who wishes to access the meeting can do so by watching the livestream available on our website, the broadcast on Comcast Channel 21, or by following the access instructions listed for this meeting on the city's public webcast and meeting materials page on the City of Eugene website. Tonight's meeting will include a public comment period. If you wish to speak and have not already done so, please fill out a request to speak form available on our public webcast and meeting materials webpage, or fill out one of the printed forms available at the entrance to the room. We will accept requests to speak until 7:35 PM. These forms will be used to generate the random order of the speakers during our public comment period and to correctly enter speakers' names into the public record. Please note that the public comment period will be limited to 90 minutes total, and if the number of speakers approaches or exceeds the time we have allotted for comment, we will encourage speakers to consider abbreviating their remarks so that the maximum number of speakers' voices can be heard tonight. For those joining the meeting remotely for the public comment period, you are welcome to email your comments to council as well. Anyone is welcome to email mayor and city council at any time. As a reminder, the council's meetings' rules of conduct include no flags, signs, louder disruptive language, noise, or conduct that obstructs the business of the council. Please keep the room quiet and respectful of all speakers, and of course, you are welcome to wave your hands in silent support. Additionally, we encourage those that are ill or who have been in close contact with others who are ill to join our meetings remotely rather than in person, and we encourage attendees to spread out within the meeting space, and masks are available in the lobby if you need one. In case of medical emergency, an automated external defibrillator, AED, is located on the counter behind the staff to your left on the side of the room, and in case of the need for an emergency evacuation, emergency exits are through the double doors located at the back of the room, the double doors near the front of the room, and also the doors out to the patio can be used if needed. And with that, I call the January 27, 2025 meeting of Eugene City Council to order. Begin with a land acknowledgement. Since time immemorial, the Kalapuea people have been the indigenous stewards to our region, building dynamic communities, maintaining balance with wildlife, and enacting sustainable land practices. This land acknowledgement is a way of resisting the erasure of indigenous histories and to honor native communities by inviting truth and reconciliation. Following treaties between 1851 and 1855, Kalapuea people were dispossessed of their indigenous homeland by the United States government and forcibly removed to the Coast Reservation in western Oregon. As we consider the impacts of colonialization, of colonization, we acknowledge the strength and resiliency of displaced indigenous people. The City of Eugene is built within the traditional homelands known as Kalapuea lehi. Kalapuea descendants are citizens of the Confederated Tribes of Grand Ronn, Community of Oregon, and the Confederated Tribes of Suletts Indians of Oregon, and they continue to make contributions in our communities here and across the lands. We express our respect for the inherent political sovereignty of all federally recognized tribal nations and indigenous people who live in the state of Oregon and across the nation. And now, the first item on tonight's agenda, several, is an action to elect city council officers for 2025. And with that, I will open the floor to council discussion. Councillor Keating.
Thank you, Mayor. It has been an honor to serve as council president. I appreciate the vote of confidence from colleagues, and I move to elect councillor Greg Evans as president of Eugene City Council for 2025.
Second.
Second.
Motion and second in council discussion. Without any additional comments, I will take the vote on this motion. All in favor, seven, and any opposed, no. The motion carries, seven to zero. Councillor Greg Evans is now our president. I will now turn it to the new council president to put a second motion forward.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to elect councillor Lindsay Leach as vice president of the city council for 2025.
Second.
Thank you. Any additional comments from council? If not, we'll now ask to take a vote on this motion. All in favor, eight, seven, and zero opposed. The motion carries, seven, zero passes. Thank you all very much. Congratulations, new council leadership. And that concludes our first agenda item. Our second item on tonight's agenda is ceremonial matters, and this evening, it is my distinct honor to announce two City of Eugene proclamations. Proclamations are ceremonial documents signed by the mayor and issued to the public and organizations and businesses in Eugene as special honors on the recommendations of the mayor for public awareness and charitable campaigns and to recognize arts and cultural celebrations. For January of 2025, I have requested two proclamations be prepared, one honoring the legacy of Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., and one acknowledging International Holocaust Remembrance Day, which is today, January 27, the international date. These proclamations will be signed and available through our City of Eugene website and communications, and I will be working with community organizations, businesses to share these proclamations at some upcoming community events. Thank you to the leaders and organizations that help us to remember and learn from our history. And with that, we conclude our second agenda item. Our third item on tonight's agenda are committee reports and items of interest. We'll now open the floor to council for reports of items of interest from the council. Counselors, as a reminder, please press the button on the bottom of your microphone to unmute and mute yourself when it is not your turn to speak. Councillor Keating.
Oh, yes.
I have an updated IGR.
Thank you. So councillor Keating, and then councillor Evans.
I defer to councillor Evans, please.
Thank you.
So this is the very brief IGR update. In addition to last week's IGR priorities work session, council will also be weighing in on two bills at this Wednesday's work session. Today, the IGR manager shared a weekly update with mayor and council and executives. Please check your email for that information. And the next Wednesday is the IGR committee February meeting. Please let us know if you have any items to add to that agenda.
Councillor Keating.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank council colleagues and members of our community, friends and family, who have offered condolences and warm thoughts and prayers for my mother, who passed away on Tuesday, January 21, at 2:43 PM. My mom, Kathy Keating, a member of this community, was a force to be reckoned with, fierce advocate for wolves. Mom loved music and movies and the outdoors and animals and her grandchildren and her three sons, who did not deserve such a loving, caring soul, the best human I've ever known. Going through mom's things, after surrounding her and showering her with love on Tuesday at Pete Moore Hospice House, which I have nothing but great things to say about Pete Moore Hospice, by the way, I found a poem she wrote dedicated to my brothers, and without objection, Mayor, I'd like to read it tonight.
Please.
Broken planet, can you hear her cry? Birds falling from the sky. Got to feed those lush green lawns, got to have the weeds all gone. What could possibly go wrong? Scraping, dumping, building landfills, creating scores of toxic dead hills, oceans dying before our eyes. Why can't people see the lies? What could possibly go wrong? Birds falling from the sky, can you hear our planet cry? Can you hear her cry? Wolves and salmon eagles too, not many left, what will you do? Rivers, streams, and lakes so low, waters precious, don't we know? What could possibly go wrong? Flooding, quakes, and wildfires, freedom criers, climate deniers, rainforests being decimated, see the hell we've now created. What could possibly go wrong? Birds falling from the sky, can you hear our planet cry? Can you hear her cry? Can you hear her cry? Written by mom, 5/27/2023, for Matthew, Michael, and Mark. Thank you, Mom. I love you.
Other committee reports, items of interest from council. With that, then, that concludes our third agenda item this evening.
Mayor, councillor Zelenka's in the queue.
Councillor Zelenka.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for that, Matt. Speaking of people passing, I wanted to also note, passing the great man, President Jimmy Carter, he was a man of faith, exemplified by his teaching Sunday School almost every Sunday into his 90s, true humanitarian, exemplified for his work with Habitat for Humanity, building houses for the poor, and a man of integrity and peace exemplified through the Carter Center and his work around the world for democracy and being awarded the Nobel Peace Prize. I think the world was a much, much better place for him having been here, as well as the many things he did as President of the United States, and I just wanted to note his passing.
Updates from council. Councillor Keating.
Thank you, Mayor. I lost it and wrapped up in the emotion. I forgot. I'd be remiss if I didn't invite my colleagues personally and the community to mom's services Saturday, February 8, at St. Jude's Catholic Church in South Eugene. It's at 11:00 AM at St. Jude's on February 8. Thank you again. I appreciate the opportunity to share a little insight into the woman who brought me into this world. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we will now conclude our third agenda item, and I will turn to the city manager to introduce the next five items on tonight's agenda.
As you might recall, we had items that we typically used to do in consent that we now do ahead of consent on priority goal actions, and so we have a couple tonight. The first one is priority goal action around adoption of a resolution approving a low-income rental housing property tax exemption renewal for a number. So you have five resolutions ahead of you approving 20-year low-income rental housing exemptions. The first one is for Apple Orchard Village Apartments and Santa Clara Place to maintain 99 units of affordable housing. And then we have new low-income, we call them LRTDs, so that's the acronym, it's terrible, but new LRTDs for property that will provide at least 192 new affordable housing units in the future at Laurel Hill Center, River Road Housing, River Road Apartments, and Whittaker Commons. And staff are available if you have questions on any of those property tax exemptions.
Thank you. I will just note that LRTD is low-income rental housing property tax exemption, LRTD. And we'll open the floor for discussion on the fourth agenda item. Right. Thank you.
We need to make a motion.
Oh, I missed that step.
Yeah, we need to have a motion on the floor in order to have the conversation, discussion.
Thank you. So discussion on the floor for council of the adoption of a resolution approving a low-income rental housing property tax exemption renewal for Apple Orchard Village Apartments. Open for council discussion and then a motion.
Motion first. Motion first and then discussion.
Okay.
Yeah, that's kind of the order. So what you do is you call on me to, you know, present the motion. I present the motion, it gets seconded, and then, you know, you call for discussion. Okay? So move to adopt a resolution attached as attachment B to this AIS approving a low-income rental housing property tax exemption for property located on Edgewood Drive in Eugene.
So this would be a moment for additional comments from council.
Second.
After a second. Thank you.
And then discussion.
And we'll come back to this in just a moment, but I think let's keep working through this agenda item, and then we'll clarify a couple of points of process because there are so many here. Council Q, councillor Leach.
Thank you so much. And I had put myself in the queue because I had general questions, which is what the city manager had asked for. So I'm going to ask those general questions, if that's okay, on all of the different motions?
Yes, and just to clarify, we will have a moment for council to discuss prior to any motion being on the floor for the remainder of these items. There's a council discussion and then a motion, additional comments from council, and then a vote, is how we'll walk through these hopefully pretty swiftly, but we have several.
Perfect. Okay, wonderful. All of these are in my district, my ward, and there's a lot of, I get a lot of communication from people living in River Road and Santa Clara. The difficulty in some of these larger apartment complexes is that there's a lot of local access roads, a lot of county roads that don't have sidewalks, they're unimproved, and they don't have any parking. And so I know two of these projects are renewals. I don't have any questions around that. Around the Laurel Hill Center, I love Laurel Hill as an organization, I'm really supportive of this project. My question is, is there sufficient parking in the vicinity to accommodate the fact that they're only proposing some parking, which is approximately 12 spaces for a 35-unit apartment complex that they're describing as walk-up, and what the plan might be if there's not sufficient parking for this complex?
Thank you, councillor. My name's Laura Hammond. I work in the community development division on affordable housing production, and I staff the LRTD program. I appreciate your question tonight about parking. The LRTD program specifically doesn't have criteria that relate to parking. It's very focused on the affordable rents and affordable income eligibility of the residents. So I can't speak to exactly what the parking will be for that unit, but I do know they plan to have parking. They have purchased a portion of property that includes an existing parking lot and then an empty lot, and so I know they will be concluding some parking. I can't speak to how much, but I could get that information to you in the future.
And to be clear, the approval of the LRTD isn't necessarily the final plans or the final drawings. It's really about that low-income eligibility and a concept that would be approved for this exemption.
That's correct. And for this, particularly for Laurel Hill Center, it's actually for the property that will become a future affordable housing development. So for the first step, we'll be applying that tax exemption just to the property.
And this might be a question for later on in our agenda, because they have also applied for home funds. And so tonight, if we, do we need to, for their project to be viable, if you know, do we need to approve both of these, the LRTD and the home trust funds?
I will say that affordable housing generally takes a number of subsidies in order to be able to be financially viable. The LRTD is one tool that we have to help those make that financially feasible for those developers. Home funds are another financial incentive we can provide. Typically, developers are looking for a number of incentives, so these probably won't be the only ones they'll be getting, but they're certainly important to their making it financially viable.
Well, thank you. My final question is around the River Road Apartments, another new housing unit. This is definitely in the Greenway, very close to the river, and can you describe the additional protections that come with a Greenway permit?
I wouldn't be the best expert to tell you those protections. I can tell you that this development has applied for and had been approved for a Greenway permit, so it has met the standards that are required for that permit.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments from council? With that, councillor Zelenka, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Are you, where'd you go? You should get a chair.
Sorry about that. I'm back.
Great, thank you. Are you aware of any affordable housing units that have been developed in the last five years that aren't subsidized housing?
Well, I work on providing incentives to affordable housing, so I don't know that I know all housing that has been developed in the City of Eugene over the last five years, and I primarily work with those developments that have been seeking subsidies.
I think number zero. And so, given that, as you said, multiple subsidies are required to get affordable housing, it stands to reason that the more money we have for affordable housing, the more affordable housing units we are going to get. One of the things that council didn't do two years ago was, as many other cities, several other cities have already developed. other cities have already done, is to charge a full 1% for the construction excise tax. We're at half a percent, which is only half of the money that we were getting, so we could increase that to 1% as many other cities have already done and get more affordable housing units. As has become very abundantly clear, the affordable housing units are directly related to the subsidies. And having those, that CET comply with the 1% maximum, as many other cities have also done, would allow us to get that much more affordable housing units in the city of Eugene, which we're in desperate need of.
Additional council comments? Okay, well, with that then, I will now take a vote on this motion on the table. All in favor? Were we missing something in the voting results? But it says recorded, so I will record verbally seven yeses. Any opposed, zero?
Apparently, colleagues, if you hit lock it in and it doesn't record the yes or no, this is what happens. It's interesting to know.
The motion passes seven to zero. Thank you very much. And that concludes our fourth agenda item, though we have had the fifth agenda item already introduced. So I will now open discussion on the floor for the fifth agenda item, Priority Action Goal Adoption of a Resolution Approving a Low-Income Rental Housing Property Tax Exemption Renewal for Santa Clara Place.
Mayor, we got to put the motion on the floor, then we go discussion. No?
I'm going to pause council president for just a moment and ask for a clarification from the city attorney that's separate from the sequence I have.
So generally speaking, I mean, you have a collection of five, and I think the intent was to have kind of a time for general discussion of all of these items under traditional parliamentary Roberts rules. To discuss a resolution, that resolution needs to be placed in front of the council through a motion. But I think the intent was to have a broader council discussion generally amongst all of them before any motions were placed on the table, and then to individually just move through and place them on the table. So this is a slightly unique situation I think that they were trying to capture. So, but I think that general discussion was probably had, but if you want to generally call for just an overall discussion of the items generally and then start moving through them and place them on the table.
Counsel, if that is amenable to you all, I'd like to have a general discussion of the four agenda items that we just had introduced. Then we'll have motions for each of those items and votes on each of those motions sequentially. So general discussion of overview, and we'll make this a little bit more succinct.
Can I talk about this CET expansion five times?
I think we will have captured that. Thank you. Counselor Clark.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say that on the, as the general scope of this, I'll be voting in favor of these because we need more housing in this area, period, end of story. That's the biggest thing that we need. We need more affordable housing. In other words, we need more housing that people that work for a living can afford to live in. But it makes me, it saddens me that, and we can have an argument all day, Counselors and like about the nature of this and whether or not subsidized housing makes it worse or better, and I don't want to do that. I don't feel good about voting in favor of these so that we're building more and more and more subsidized housing. I'm not sure that's the best answer under the circumstances. But I'll vote in favor of these because the need outweighs the stupidity of me having an argument about it. So it's substantial. And I would only urge my colleagues along the lines of the important thing that Counselor Leach mentioned, that while we're building more and more subsidized housing or housing of any kind, we're not going to alter the fact that the people who live in it are going to drive cars, and they're going to park them somewhere. And there are state mandates that I would encourage our IGA, our Intergovernmental Agency, to lobby the state as frequently as possible, that CFAC is a bad idea and that it's pushing downhill a city's inability to mandate parking that is off-street when anything is built. And as a result, we're going to see more and more of the problem that Counselor Leach, that you mentioned, that as anything is built, more and more and more people aren't going to be in parking lots of the buildings that are built, but parking on the street. And I think that's going to lead to greater issues for all of us as we go. So, thank you.
Other council discussion. Would anyone else like to join the queue? Okay, so that will conclude our general council discussion of agenda items four, five, six, seven, and eight, I believe. And now I will turn to our council president for a motion on the first of those for Santa Clara Place.
Thank you, Mayor. Move to adopt the resolution attached as attachment B to this AIS approving low-income rental housing property tax exemption for property located on Santa Clara Avenue in Eugene.
Second.
Any additional council discussion? That, I will call for a vote on this motion. All in favor? Of seven with zero voting against, so the motion passes seven, zero. And that concludes our fifth agenda item. Moving on to the sixth agenda item, I will ask the city council president to bring forward a motion for the Laurel Hill Center River Road Housing on Hunsacker Lane.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Move to adopt the resolution attached as attachment B to this AIS approving low-income rental housing property tax exemption for the property located on Hunsacker Lane in Eugene.
Any additional?
Second.
From council. Thank you both. With that, I will ask for a vote. All in favor? Seven yays, zero opposed, and the motion passes with a vote of seven, zero. Thank you. And that concludes our sixth agenda item. The seventh agenda item, the LERTD related to River Road Apartments. City Council President.
Thank you, Mayor. Move to adopt the resolution attached as attachment B to this AIS approving a low-income rental housing property tax exemption for the property located on River Road in Eugene.
Second.
Any additional comments from council? With that, I will take a vote on the motion. All in favor? Seven in favor, zero opposed. The motion passes with a vote of seven, zero. And that concludes our seventh agenda item. And lastly, eighth agenda item, the LERTD related to the Whittaker Commons Project. City Council President.
Move to adopt, move to adopt the resolution attached as attachment B to this AIS approving a low-income rental housing property tax exemption for property located on Adams Street in Eugene.
Second.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Seeing none, I will take a vote on this motion. All in favor? Seven, zero opposed, and the motion passes with a vote of seven, zero. And that concludes our eighth agenda item. And I will now turn it back over to the city manager to introduce the next agenda item. The adoption of a resolution approving a low-income rental housing property tax exemption for Whittaker Commons. Should that be bundled with our last several? Okay. One more.
Home funds.
Yes, yes. Nope, you're good. We did.
Just did Adams Street.
Adams Street was the last. Whittaker Commons on Adams Street. That's okay?
This many of them, and I'm confused too. So, all right.
We are on agenda page, I believe, agenda page 64, agenda item nine. And now moving on to our home and HARP discussion.
Thank you. Council is asked to recommend the use of federal home funds and home American Rescue Plan funds for two affordable housing development proposals submitted through the 2024 Home Request for Proposals process. The highest scoring development proposals from the Evaluation Committee were Homes for Goods proposal for the Coleman and Laurel Hill Center's proposal for River Road Housing. The two proposals would create up to 105 new homes in support of services for people at risk of homelessness earning no more than 60% of the area median income. The Eugene Springfield Home Consortium Governing Board will make final funding decisions for home funds. And staff is still here, somewhere, back there. Yeah, additional questions?
Any additional clarifying questions for staff before we move to that motion? Thank you. So with that, I will turn to the council president to put a motion forward.
Move to recommend awarding Homes for Good $1,200,000 of home funds for the Coleman proposal, and recommend awarding Laurel Hill Center the full amount of home ARP rental housing funds of $2,537,182, and home ARP Support Services funds of $300,000 for the River Road Housing Proposal.
Second.
Thank you. Any additional comments from council? Counselor Zelenka.
I just wanted to point out that these are both very good proposals. I wholeheartedly endorse them. With this 105 and the 192 that we just added more LERTD for, plus the 99 that we extended, that's ensuring or creating almost 400 units of affordable housing, all of course subsidized housing. But that's a significant amount of housing. Almost 300 of that is new. So I think this is a very laudable goal towards our getting more affordable housing in the ground in the city of Eugene.
Counselor Leach.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, again, these are in my ward. It's a beautiful night for housing in Ward Seven. I just wanted to speak to the Coleman Project for a moment and how much I am excited to approve this home funds award because it's transitional housing, it's right in that, you know, Four Corners area on 99. This is going to be really important transitional housing for a lot of people who really need that support. So I just wanted to comment on that, and I'm really looking forward to making this yes vote tonight.
Any other comments from council? And with that, I will now take a vote on the motion. All in favor? Thank you. Seven in favor, zero opposed, and the motion passes with a vote of seven, zero. And that concludes our ninth agenda item for this evening. Moving on to our next agenda item, I will now open the floor for discussion on Consent, Calendar One, Approval of City Council Minutes, Approval of City Council Tentative Agenda, and Appointment to the Metropolitan Wastewater Management Commission. Floor is open for council discussion. Counselor Kucinski.
Just as a point of clarity, since I was not at these meetings where there were minutes to be approved, do I need to abstain from those?
You don't have to do that, no.
Okay, great. Thank you.
No additional discussion. I will turn to the council president to put a motion forward.
I move to approve the items on Consent, Calendar One.
Second.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Seeing none, I will take a vote on this motion. Seven in favor, zero opposed, and the motion passes with a vote of seven, zero. And that concludes our 10th agenda item. Really moving here. We'll now turn back to our city manager to introduce the next agenda item, a resolution acknowledging receipt of city of Eugene Annual Comprehensive Financial Report for the fiscal year ending in June 30, 2024.
Thank you. Staff requests that the council approve a resolution acknowledging receipt of the city's annual comprehensive financial report, the ACFR. A lot of people call it the CAFR, for the fiscal year ending in June, that ended June 30, 2024. State law requires that each year the city contract with an authorized accounting firm for audit of its accounts and fiscal affairs. The auditors have issued an unmodified opinion, also known as a clean opinion, on the city's basic financial statements indicating that the city has prepared these statements in conformity with generally accepted accounting principles. Additionally, the auditors noted that they identified no instances of noncompliance with state law or other matters that are required to be reported under government auditing standards. A clean opinion is an indicator of sound financial management and creditworthiness to the community, other governmental jurisdiction, credit rating agencies, and others. Thank you.
We'll now open the floor for council discussion. Seeing none, we'll ask the council president to put a motion forward.
Move to approve a resolution acknowledging receipt of the annual comprehensive financial report for the city of Eugene for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2024.
Second.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Seeing none, we'll ask for a vote on this motion. All in favor? Seven in favor, zero opposed, and the motion passes with a vote of seven, zero. Thank you. And that concludes our 11th agenda item this evening. I will now close the January 27, 2025 city council meeting and call the January 27, 2025 meeting of the Urban Renewal Agency to order. Agency Director, please introduce the next item, which is Resolution Acknowledging Receipt of the Annual Financial Report of the Urban Renewal Agency of the city of Eugene for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2024.
Thank you, Mayor. Staff requests that the board approve a resolution acknowledging receipt of the Urban Renewal Agency Annual Financial Report for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2024. State law requires that each year the agency contract with an authorized accounting firm for the audit of its accounts and fiscal affairs. The audit firm has issued an unmodified opinion, also known as a clean opinion, on the agency's basic financial statements. A clean opinion is an indicator of sound financial management and creditworthiness to the community, credit agencies, and others. Thank you.
Thank you. And now open the floor for discussion, agencies discussion. Seeing none, turn to the agency president to put a motion forward.
Move to approve a resolution acknowledging receipt of the annual financial report for the Urban Renewal Agency of the city of Eugene for fiscal year ended June 30, 2024.
Second.
Any additional comments from the agency? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote on this motion. All in favor? Seven in favor, zero opposed, and the motion passes with a vote of seven, zero. Thank you very much. That concludes our 12th agenda item. And I now close the January 27, 2025 meeting of the Urban Renewal Agency and call the January 27, 2025 city council meeting to order. And the last item on tonight's agenda is the public comment period. Public comment period is an opportunity for individuals to speak to the city council on any city-related issues except those items which have already been heard via hearings official. Staff, can you please share a list and a total number of speakers that have signed up to speak tonight by 7:35?
Thank you, Mayor. We have 46 speakers, or 45.
Forty-five or 46 speakers. Thank you. Our public comment period is limited to 90 minutes total, and we also, per council operating agreements, have a meeting close time of 10:00 p.m. But I think we might be able to get close depending on how succinct some comments are. We shall see. If the total number of speakers approaches or exceeds the time that we have allotted for con- for comment, we do encourage you to consider abbreviating your remarks so that the maximum number of speakers can be heard. And as mentioned at the beginning of our meeting, city council emails and mayor and city council email is also always available. Moderator, will you please introduce our public comment?
Excellent. I will announce two speakers' names at a time. When you are called to speak, please state your name and your ward or neighborhood if known before beginning your comments. If you are announced as the next speaker, please move to the seat in the front row designated for the next speaker. When it is your turn, you may come to the podium. Please leave any bags you have with you at your seat. If you have documents to give counsel, please place them in the basket near the podium. You will have two and a half minutes to speak. The timer will flash red when you have fifteen seconds remaining to speak. Your microphone will be muted at the two and a half minute mark. Please note that the use of profanity is prohibited, and any instances of profanity will result in immediate termination of speaking privileges. Our first speaker this evening is Lynn Woodrich, followed by Joel Vaughn.
My name's Lynn Woodrich. I'm the Active Bethel Community Co-Chair. I've lived in the Bethel area over thirty years. I live in Ward Eight. I'm speaking for the Active Bethel Community Board. Thank you for reversing the zone verification decision for USD Biofuels Translating Facility and thank you for moving along the public health standards. Closing the gaps in policies to protect people should help to remove any questions about companies locating in inappropriate places like the following. Here we go again. This must be stopped before approval. The H&amp;S Energy Group, a limited liability company that has been in business for only three months, is asking for an I-three heavy industrial zone verification dated December thirty-first to put a bulk plant for motor fuels known as a tank farm on Kintry Street in the Trainsong neighborhood between Highway ninety-nine and Northwest Expressway. It would be a distribution and storage center for gasoline, diesel, and other fuel-related products. It would consist of several large above and/or below-ground storage tanks as well as warehousing related products. The fuel for the tanks would be supplied by rail, pipeline, or truck and would be delivered to destinations by truck. This has similar concerns as USD Biofuels with limited liability and must be stopped. Speaking of limited liability, the threat of unsafe railroads remains. The trains already transport many dangerous chemicals through these yards every day. If Union Pacific leases the rail yard to corp, less experienced, non-Union employees would be responsible for maintaining and operating the yard and all the hazardous materials traveling through it. Union Pacific wants to cut corners and cut costs at the risk of safety. We have until this Friday, January thirty-first, to send letters to the Surface Transportation Board to stop this. Go to Justice for Trainsong for to sign the petition. Bethel needs a police substation on Highway ninety-nine now. It doesn't need to be fancy. The city hired a downtown incident commander in twenty-twenty-three to focus on public safety and cleanliness, ensuring appropriate police presence and coordinating resources from across the organization in a rapid response team. Bethel needs this. The community's safety payroll tax needs to support Bethel, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Our next speaker is Joel Vaughn, followed by Misty Bowman.
Members of the city council, my name is Joel Vaughn. I'm a member of the newly activated Trainsong Neighbors Association. I stand before you today as a concerned citizen deeply troubled by the deteriorating conditions of our neighborhood. For too long, we have witnessed a decline in essential services and growing disregard for the well-being of our community. Our streets become riddled with potholes posing a significant safety hazard to drivers, cyclists, pedestrians, and numerous pets. The lack of timely road maintenance is not only inconvenient but also a danger to public safety. The sidewalks, or lack thereof, are unlit uneven, often obstructed by illegal dumping with only one sidewalk down Bethel. This makes it difficult and even dangerous for people with disabilities, elderly, and families with small children to navigate the neighborhood. Trainsong Park has been neglected for years. Part of the park has been closed off with no solution and a lack of regular maintenance. These spaces are vital for the physical and mental health of our community, and its current state is unacceptable. There's a significant lack of communication between the city and the residents regarding ongoing projects, maintenance schedules, and community concerns. These issues not only diminish the quality of life but also negatively impact property values and discourage community engagement. Criminal activity has gone unnoticed or disregarded. Six months ago, I had an emergency that the police responded to with a phone call eleven hours after I had called nine-one-one, resulting in the purposecaping with my property. Even after finding the name of the individual with video surveillance as my tool and communicating this to the authorities, the problem was never addressed. I urge the city council to prioritize the allocation of resources for the maintenance and improvement of our neighborhood infrastructure. I would like to see my taxes support the community that I reside in. Establish a more transparent and responsive communication channel between the city and residents. Extend the urban growth boundary to accommodate our residents, preventing further issues that arise such as USD Fuels and J.H. I believe that working together, we can create a thriving and vibrant community for all residents. Thank you for your time and your attention.
Thank you, Joel. Our next speakers are Misty Bowman, followed by Zach Mulholland.
Good evening. My name is Misty Bowman. I live in Ward Seven, and I'm a Dark Sky International advocate, and I'm here to discuss light pollution. Twenty-three years ago, the city council passed an outdoor lighting ordinance. Four months later, episode sixteen of season fourteen of the animated sitcom series The Simpsons aired an episode on light pollution. Since then, The Simpsons has only gotten worse, and so has the light pollution in Eugene. So tonight, I would like to further explain Dark Sky International's second principle of responsible outdoor lighting, targeted lighting, and why it should not only be part of a revised and forced ordinance, it could also save the city two million dollars. There is a term in lighting called nadir, N-A-D-I-R, nadir. Nadir is the point below the illumination in the light bulb. To explain a little further, I brought a show and tell. This point, where I put my index finger, is zero degrees nadir. Zero degrees nadir, zero degrees nadir. As you might imagine, perpendicular with this point is ninety degrees nadir. All lighting above ninety degrees nadir is wasted. It's wasted as skyglow, light trespassing, and glare. Unshielded lights on land waste half their lighting. Unshielded lights on water waste seventy-five percent of their lighting. Dark Sky International estimates that the energy from light pollution costs every man, woman, and child America twelve dollars a year. In the city of Eugene, that's two million dollars a year. If that sounds too good to be true, look at Tucson, Arizona. They implemented Dark Sky International policies, and they ended up saving two million dollars a year. So when you're driving home tonight, realize those cobra streetlights, fishbowl, acorn, and lantern lights aren't just causing unpleasant glare, they're also literally burning up money before your eyes. I quote Lisa Simpson in "Scuse Me While I Miss the Sky." No one ever wrote a poem about thickly orange glow barf. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Misty. Our next speakers are Zach Mulholland, followed by Micah Anton.
Hello, Mayor and council. My name is Zach Mulholland. I live in Ward Six. I am a member of the City of Eugene Budget Committee, though I speak tonight on my own behalf. I would like to ask the council to please pass the fire fee. If we don't approve the fire fee, we're looking at eleven and a half million dollars of cuts which are going to hit every service that we see in the city. Animal services, public safety, parks and rec, fire. No one has a program that's not going to be affected by this that they care about. And so I just ask you to look at the recommendations of the revenue subcommittee that recommended the fire fee as the best option on the table to help close the funding gap. There are critical things that even if we pass the fire fee are still going to be on the chopping block, like animal services, like neighborhood service officers that many of you fought to try and get into the budget. And so I ask you to please take this critical step to approve that. We have, out of measure five and fifty, we have local governments all over the state that are having structural deficits. We need statewide reform to fix this. We can do what California did and do things like resetting assessed value to the sale value when a property is sold. We can have new construction be taxed at their actual value rather than being significantly marked down on their assessed value. Last, so please throw your support behind statewide reform efforts for our property tax system so that we can actually support the services that you're all elected to facilitate. Last, Councilor Keating, thank you for reading the lovely poem, and we all feel for you. And with that, have a great night.
Thank you, Zach. Our next speakers are Micah Anton, followed by Michelle Messier Legg.
Mayor Canutson and Eugene City Council, my name is Micah, and I live in Ward Two. I'm here today to ask you to take action for climate justice. When I'm talking about climate, I'm not just talking about parts per million of CO2. Climate change is about, it's a racial justice issue, it's an economic justice issue, and it's a housing justice issue. The indoor and outdoor air pollution caused by the burning of fossil fuels disproportionately impacts poor communities and communities of color. Temperature extremes and extreme weather events caused by climate change disproportionately impact the most marginalized as well, particularly our unhoused neighbors. Despite being young, I have witnessed dramatic impacts of climate change within my lifetime. I dread going home over the winter holidays to see my hometown because I know that where once there were feet of snow, there will just be gray, dry ground. The frightening realities of climate change are made harder to bear grappling with how little capacity I have to mitigate or adapt. I do what I can to adapt and combat climate change on scales small and large, but we all know how difficult it is to stop this global catastrophe. And I've been disappointed and surprised to see how difficult it's been to make changes and adapt even within my own home. As a young renter, working part-time and living off a low income, struggling with rising costs of living, it's difficult for me to make my own living space more energy-efficient and even harder for me to transition to renewables. I know with the incoming Trump administration and the already insufficient federal funding that is in place to help people like me make those changes will be totally withdrawn. Local resources and funds will be essential to help people make these changes. Creating resources and funding for low-income households to access affordable, clean energy is a straightforward step in the right direction. To be blunt, there are innumerable things that we as a city need to be doing to repair the centuries of injustice that have brought us to where we are now, so many more than I can name in this two minutes and thirty seconds. But given that climate change is interconnected to so many other issues, I ask that you take this first step towards climate justice. Thank you.
Thank you, Micah. Our next speakers are Michelle Messier Legg, followed by Linda Agnew.
Hi, my name's Michelle, and I just bought a house in the Trainsong neighborhood about two years ago now. And I would not have guessed I would be as involved in the Neighborhood Association as I have become now. And I wanted to come down and thank you all for the support that you showed for us with the USD Clean Fuels. It renewed my belief that coming together and unifying, we can really change things. And with that being said, I think now I'm going to be paying more attention to this public health development standard that Beyond Toxins has provided a lot of background on it since twenty-twenty-three. I read that our last mayor put that as one of the four public health concerns moving forward, and that one's not taken care of, and I know that it's a big animal. And so instead of saying, what are you doing about it, I wanted to ask you all, what can I do to help? And perhaps maybe go and do some research on other cities, you know, and provide feedback about what's helped for other cities and what hasn't helped, and rally some of the other association members. We could all kind of split up some things, and, you know, if there's any kind of things that you think that we could do to help forward, we certainly would do that for you. And just wanted to introduce ourselves and let you know that we're here for you, and we'd like to have some, at least some scheduled days this year that you all would put some work towards that for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Our next speakers are Linda Agnew, followed by Renee Buchanan.
Good evening, Mayor Canutson and city council members. My name is Linda Agnew. I live in Ward Four, and I'm on the board of the Friends of the Eugene Public Library. Thank you for providing this time for public input. I want to take a few seconds to ask anyone who supports strong library funding to please stand. You have an important decision to make. We elected you to make important decisions. I don't pretend to understand public funding, but what I do understand is that sometimes to make wise decisions, it might require tempering strong opinions to benefit the greater good. You all have the budget numbers in front of you, and you know the library took a big hit the last budgeting session. So I want to speak to something else. A recent study out of Princeton University for the Bureau of Labor Statistics indicated that we are more isolated than ever. From two thousand and three to two thousand and twenty-three, we spent on an average twenty-five percent less time with face-to-face contact, even in our own homes. For some groups, it's as high as forty percent. We can blame TV, our phones, COVID, yada, yada, yada. In addition to economic consequences, the study found this isolation led to depression, lack of civic engagement, political and cultural divisions, and the rabbit hole of conspiracy theories. The solution: public places, sometimes called third spaces, cafes, entertainment events, and best of all, libraries. A recent Eugene Weekly article named "Our Library is the Best Place to Meet Even Among Young People," and with D E I under attack, the inclusive EPL is a perfect sanctuary. There are some who might want us to believe that our library is a luxury, but if we are going to debate how best to save our city, we need to make sure it contains those things that make it worth saving. To use a metaphor, yours is not a choice between rent and a bigger TV. It is a choice between rent and food. We need both. We need it all. This may not be your personal reality, but it is the reality of the seventy-six percent of the Eugene population who voted yes on the last library levy. It is your task to do what is best for all the city. Thank you and good luck.
Next speakers are Renee Buchanan, followed by Dana Fleming.
I'm Renee Buchanan. I live in Ward Five. I'm a member of the Eugene Public Library Foundation Board. However, tonight I'm speaking on behalf of myself. I believe that everyone in this room wants Eugene to be a safe and livable city. Each of you councillors wants a safe and livable city. Everyone watching online wants to live in a safe and livable city. I think this is true because you showed up, because I showed up, because we all showed up. We all agree this is what we want. Cutting any of the city's department budget will be painful for many of our community members. With an eleven-point-five-million-dollar shortfall, we are going into this budget cycle on top of huge cuts from the last biennium. We are past cutting the fat. We are at the point of amputation. The city council asked the city manager to outline two possible budget approaches, an equitable distribution of cuts or not touching police and fire and having the other city departments absorb the shortfall. As I see it, your two options are, one, we can cut off all of our fingers and our toes and our ears and our nose, which would seem most equitable, which in my, by my calculations, would be about a one-million-dollar cut to the library. Or option two, we can amputate one of our limbs and keep our fingers and toes and ears and nose, and I see this as being approximately about two million dollars that's going to be cut to the library. Shall we reduce public safety? The response time for emergencies is already unacceptable. Or will we reduce community services? The safety nets for our community are already fraying. Whether we cut off all of our digits, ears, nose, and our toes, or cut off our left arm, our recovery from an amputation will be challenging, if even possible. The community is here tonight to say we want library services, and we know they are essential services to many members of our community. I am confident we also want fire and police and a functioning municipal court and parks and recreation and cultural services. We can't correct the statewide revenue source crisis by June, but we can avoid an irreversible city crisis by June. Thank you.
Thank you, Renee. Our next speakers are Dana Fleming, followed by Lisa Erkin.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Dana Fleming, and I'm resident of Ward Two. And I also have the honor of being the executive director of Eugene Public Library Foundation, which is in Ward One, where our office is located, in the downtown library. Thank you for your service to the community and for thoughtfully deciding how to balance the city's budget, especially in light of revenue shortfalls. I know you continue to be faced with tough decisions. I've testified before that cutting the library's general fund so deeply that there's no funding left for books, programming, or materials should not be the new normal. It was during last week's work session that I realized with great horror that some of you think that the library's budget could and should sustain a devastating amount of additional additional cuts. Let me tell you, there is no more meat on the bone. The cumulative impact of the cuts of past years have made it incredibly challenging for library staff to balance the needs of library patrons against their limited availability and fewer resources. Additional cuts will further impede library patrons and cripple an already diminished staff. I want to remind you that many in our community believe, as do I, that our library is the cornerstone of our city, a hub for knowledge, opportunity, and community, and worth preserving. One of the measures of urban resilience is the presence of open, accessible, and welcoming public places where residents can congregate and provide social support in times of need, but also every day. At a time when we need to look for more ways to be more resilient and have equal access to information, it is counterintuitive to catastrophically underfund one of the very institutions that make our community stronger. I appreciate what you do to try to make Eugene a better place to live. Please do not take from it one of the very best things about it, our library.
Thank you, Dana. Our next speakers are Lisa Arkin, followed by Adam Epstein.
Hello. For the record, my name is Lisa Arkin. I live in Ward One, and I am the director of Beyond Toxics. And I wanted to thank Counselor Keating for sharing memories of his mother and also say these comments in acknowledgement of her touching poem and her repeated question, what could go wrong? First, on behalf of many community members and Beyond Toxics members, I want to express my gratitude and relief that the city's planning department reached a conclusion to deny the green light to the Texas-based USD Clean Fuels Company. Thank you to staff for reviewing the original decision. Trainsong and River Road neighborhoods face a new threat involving a fossil fuel corporation. A zoning verification application was recently received by the city and filed by HNS Fuels to build a tank farm for both above-ground and below-ground fuel tanks in the Trainsong neighborhood. Picture the fuel tank infrastructure at Kinder Morgan off Prairie Road, but on a slightly smaller scale. We hope the city manager will ask planning staff about this new request and identify the correct legal tools to nip this in the bud. Yesterday, Beyond Toxics and the three rail-impacted neighborhoods held a community meeting in partnership with two unions representing Union Pacific Railroad workers. Union Pacific, a Class One railroad company, is attempting to turn over their responsibilities and financial liability for all operations at the Eugene rail yard to a Class Three rail company known as Central Oregon and Pacific Railroad. This is a very serious issue that needs your attention, but is too complex for public comment. Congresswoman Val Hoyle and Representative Nancy Nathanson are taking steps to help. What our community needs and wants is a letter from the city of Eugene to appropriate federal agencies objecting to this lease agreement. Although you are a local government, you can take a stand for this city. It puts our community at risk for the large volume of hazardous chemicals that pass through our neighborhoods. And I want to thank Counselor Yeh and Counselor Evans for attending the community member, and thank you to Counselor Evans for sharing his knowledge of railroad activities.
Thank you, Lisa. Our next speakers this evening are Adam Epstein, followed by Debbie McGee.
Thank you. My name is Adam Epstein. I'm the president of Local 1724 Ask Me. We're the ones who clean your toilets, make sure that your computers are working. We're the ones who make sure your parks are habitable. We make sure that the police can do their duties by making sure their cars are upfit. We make sure that fire is able to inspect and enter buildings safely by making sure that their plans are available to them in emergencies. We clear roads in ice storms, and we remediate cyberoffense like the one that just happened to us this Friday through today. We are everywhere in the city, and there's not enough of us, not nearly enough of us. And if you do not pass a stabilization fee or some other funding mechanism, the roads will have more potholes. The parks will be unavailable after hours. You will not be able to go into the library and have a friendly face greet you. Time for politics is over. We desperately need you to accept that we need to have this fee, and we need you to look at the long term and propose state or other solutions to stabilize our budget in the long term, because this has been going on for 10 years, or we have not had the funds, as others have said, to even have flesh in our bones. My members, and in solidarity with IAFF 851, the fire union, would like to ask you to not name it a fire stabilization fee. Call it what it is. We will support you. We'll knock doors. We'll make calls. We'll stand at intersections. But this funding needs to pass, because while it's not the best solution, as Counselor Clark kind of said, that sometimes politics has to be set aside for here and now. We desperately need you to pass this. I'd even recommend that you increase the amount, no matter how hard it is for some of the members who live in this city to pay additional fees, but we can't do what we are doing already. To ask us to lose $11.5 million or $8.5 million, no matter how you divide it, no matter how you separate it, everyone will suffer. Police will suffer. Fire will suffer. We will all suffer, even if not a single job is lost. Thank you for your time, and thank you to all my brothers and sisters, whether you're in my union or any other.
Thank you, Adam. Our next speakers are Debbie McGee, followed by Jesse Gandy.
Happy New Year and a big welcome to Mayor Knutson and Counselor Kaczynski. I am Debbie McGee, and I've lived on my rural farm outside Eugene for 40 years. I organize with 350 Eugene. Thank you for this opportunity. Some of you were present in 2014, when the city passed the Climate Recovery Ordinance, and committed to reducing our community-wide fossil fuel use 50% by 2030, as well as reductions of community-wide greenhouse gas emissions by 7.6% annually. It has been over 10 years. In these 10 years, we have witnessed unprecedented and accelerating climate chaos here and across the globe, namely record floods, droughts, storms, sea level rise, rain bombs, and fires, to say nothing of the damage to the homes of people and wildlife, business and the ecosystems upon which all life depends, our forests. Although recent local climate progress is encouraging, sadly, we are still not on track to meet any of the commitments in the Climate Recovery Ordinance. It is painstaking work, and there are insufficient resources, I know. But in the face of accelerating climate and political instability, inaction is simply not an option. We now have the most anti-climate regime in history in full control of our federal government, with climate progress being rolled back at a dizzying speed. I think we can all agree that action at the local and state level is more urgent than ever. So I ask you to prioritize swiftly adopting the fire services fee, which our first responders and other citizen, city services desperately require and deserve, and then immediately take action focused on building decarbonization. You have the power to generate revenue for our local transition to clean, affordable, renewable energy. Keep that priority. 2024 was the hottest year on record. The planet has warmed 1.6 degrees Celsius, passing the UN Paris Climate Accord's goal of 1.5 to stay alive. It looks like catastrophic temperature rise of 3 to 4 degrees Celsius is on its way. We have the technological know-how. The obstacles are entirely political. The one thing that overarches all our issues, it's the planet warming that's heating up our tissues. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. Our next speakers are Jesse Gandy, followed by Drew Simran.
Hello, Council. Appreciate your time. I'm Jesse Gandy, a property and business owner in Ward One, Ms. Kaczynski. I'm requesting an ethics probe into our city surveyor Jim Colton and the entire city surveyor's office. I first brought my property in 2021, contracted a private survey to have my boundaries delineated. And a year later, my neighbor hired a surveyor to survey my property, who came back with different results with Mr. Colton's help. They did not provide public records to support their stance on where my property boundaries are. So I went looking for them, brought what I'd found to the city surveyor. The city surveyor issued me a deed for excess right-of-way between my property and the city street. In two weeks after I was issued this deed, Mr. Colton came to court to testify against the validity of the deed that he issued to me and to support my neighbor's surveyor. So he's basically, has testified that he issued me a fraudulent deed and clouded the title to my personal property. Since this trial, I've been requesting any information that he could provide that supports his position and the position of branch engineering, and have been stonewalled and repeatedly told to file Freedom of Information Acts, which I have done. This week, I received a chain of emails, three years long, from Jim Colton and branch engineering that are very suspicious. Mr. Colton's misuse of city property is really beyond my concern, but his willy-nilly treatment of the property that I own by title is very concerning to me. Mr. Colton has hired directly into the city surveyor's office from branch engineering, and it's quite possible that he's on their payroll. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jesse. Our next speakers are Drew Simran, followed by Sarah Boom.
Evening, Mayor Knutson and Eugene City Council. My name is Drew Simran, and I live in the River Road neighborhood. I've lived in Eugene my whole life, and I'm here to testify to counsel to take steps to support climate justice with the beginning of a new federal administration. And we need local climate action now more than ever. I'd like to urge the city council to prioritize local actions by supporting the electrification of homes and buildings with the city's Climate Recovery Ordinance and Action Plan. Specifically, I ask you to consider focus on building decarbonization by creating revenue generation opportunities to increase subsidies and to support transition low-income and other historically marginalized community members to renewable electricity. I attended the State of the City address, and it sounded like there's a lot of goals around building dense housing in the downtown neighborhood. So it would be great if we can make that all electric, so it can be affordable for people to heat and cool their homes while having a lower bill as well. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you, Drew. Our next speakers are Sarah Boom, followed by Mick Hornbeck.
Greetings, Eugene City Council, and thank you for your time. My name is Sarah Boom, and I am a resident of Ward Seven. Nearly 100 years ago, a new leader rose to power in Germany. You've probably heard of him, but to be honest, there's only so much you and I can do about national leaders. Let's talk about the followers. Back then, the secret police and the death squads worked hand-in-hand to murder millions of people. Most members of the secret police were not ruling party members, but rather unaffiliated bureaucrats carrying out the laws the ruler dictated it. The Nazis wished that they had the spy drones you paid for EPD to use against your own citizens, but they were able to commit mass murder even without them. It was only because normal, nice citizens like you and me informed on their Jewish, disabled, Roma, gay, and leftist neighbors that they were able to accomplish their horrible ends. Here in America, we call the secret police by certain acronyms like FBI, CIA, and ICE. Whenever they work with, whether they will work with the army to form death squads is an open question. These racist organizations already work with local law enforcement to enslave Black and Brown people in concentration camps called prisons and murder migrants in concentration camps called detention centers. Now, a new administration has gained control of these incredibly violent institutions. ICE agents have already arrested Native American people rejecting their tribal IDs. U.S. soldiers have been deployed to the border to enforce white supremacist laws. I have to ask, will you be nice and normal bureaucrats carrying out the laws the leader dictates it? Or will you be an uncooperative nuisance and come between the followers and the people who need to be protected? I know which one I will be. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Our next speakers are Mick Hornbeck, followed by Tate Thompson.
Hi, my name's Mick Hornbeck. I'm a member of the Trainsong community. We appreciate that you took the time to discuss one of the difficulties we were facing, and it was a potential public health and safety disaster. We also appreciate the folks down at the planning department for finding the justification for denying the zoning verification. We've all rejoiced in this regard, albeit cautiously. Over the course of the last few months, it's become, it was kind of obvious that many didn't know exactly where our neighborhood was located. So we're hoping that by now everyone has an idea that we're over in West Eugene. West Eugene is, sorry, we are, the Trainsong neighborhood, apparently I don't know where it is. The Trainsong neighborhood is west of the rail yard, where industry sings its name, west of the Opportunity Village, where the housing insecure have found solace, east of the Bethel Community, and the Parole's Office in Highway 99, where panhandling is an issue, north of the South Hills, which feels like another world away, and a 10-minute bike ride from the Whittaker neighborhood, in all directions, arguably one of the last vestiges of affordable neighborhoods in our city. We're hardworking, mostly blue-collar people. We don't ask for much from our city, but I assure you, we can offer more than being just a dumping ground for industry and disenfranchised. But it does often leave me wondering if the city just lacks the imagination for the area that we live in? Will it perpetuate the problems, put our neighbors at risk of extinction by way of shouldering the brunt of the city's issues? Or will you open dialogue with us regarding the city's plan that will affect our lives so that we can help out? We're now facing another major fueling facility in our community. Now that we're all oriented, we request that your next work session offer some insights in how we might help fight back effectively. Wednesday night, we vote in our first election to reactivate our Neighborhood Association. We're excited and motivated for this next chapter.
Thank you, Mick. Your time is concluded. Our next speakers are Tate Thompson, followed by Amy Ansa. All right, is there a Tate Thompson? All right, I will call the next speaker and call Tate one more time. So our next speaker is Amy Ansa.
Thank you for having me, for being here. My name's Amy Ansa. I live in Ward Eight, West Eugene. First off, I wanted to thank our new mayor, Mayor Knutson, for coming out to the Scorpion Creek Ranch community event the other night. Your support and the support of the fellow mayor and the person that we had from the county council is huge for making that a reality, and that is a really big, important step to help with what I'm here to talk about. Also, thank you all for being here tonight. This is truly democracy manifest, so I love to see it. I'm here to talk about being transgender in America and in Oregon. As a community, we are very scared. Many people I know, including me, are putting off surgeries or starting hormones, and I personally have two transgender children. And I will tell you right now, transgender-affirming surgeries and, excuse me, rather, affirming care saves lives. Transphobia is alive and well in Oregon and in Lane County, and although it is better here than in a lot of other places in the U.S., people who come here are often taken aback by how strong the anti-trans feelings are actually here. A lot of good work has been done by the state, county, and city governments, including the continued work by and support of the Eugene Human Rights Commission. This is a great start, but it needs to continue and it needs to expand. I also want to say something related to the library funding, and I said this when I got LTD Employee of the Month October 23. Quote, "I wish that we live in a world where every child was issued a library card and a bus pass. I strongly believe that if you give them those two things, you give them the world." Continued support of the library is a very important way to protect and show support for LGBT people, undocumented immigrants, and the overall health and well-being of our community. We need to know that we are going to be okay. We need to know that you are with us, and that no matter what happens under this new administration, that local government, which is the government that most affects people's daily lives... daily lives, is going to protect us and fight for us. There are so many organizations here and nationwide that are advocating for the rights of transgender and gender nonconforming people, but we cannot do without you. I support enhanced sanctuary city for undocumented immigrants from any federal law enforcement and in cooperation with said federal law enforcement, protections with reproductive healthcare, LGBT and trans rights when it comes to gender-affirming care, housing and job rights, and any others that are under threat under the new administration. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. This is one more call for Tate Thompson. Is there a Tate Thompson in the room? All right, moving on, our next speakers are JB Carney, followed by Kelly Johnson.
Good evening, President Evans, esteemed council members, Mayor Knutson. Thank you for your time this evening. My name is JB Carney, and I'm the Senior Director of Sport at Traveline County and a resident of Ward Two. Before I begin, I'd like to recognize a few individuals in the audience this evening. Jody Smith from Tracktown USA, Ian Dobson from the Eugene Marathon, Samara Phelps from Traveline County, and Craig Leon from the University of Oregon. Tonight, we're here to celebrate our community's legacy as Tracktown USA. You see, Tracktown is more than just a title. It's a reflection of our collective dedication. Then-organizers, volunteers, participants, and city staff have all contributed to our success. In 2024 alone, our track and field and running events generated an estimated $50 million in economic impact. It brought thousands of athletes, coaches, fans, and volunteers to our community, benefiting local businesses and generating tax revenue. Tracktown is not just about the professional or collegiate athletes that visit every summer. Every year, thousands of local youth and adults participate in events like the Eugene Marathon, Butte-to-Bute Challenge, and the Oregon Track Club All-Cumbers Meets. These events foster a shared sense of identity and community pride. In 2025, we'll host yet again another blockbuster summer of events, starting with Eugene Marathon, the Big Ten Championships, the NCAA Outdoor Championships, the 50th anniversary of the Prefontaine Classic, and USATF Outdoor Championships. These events give us another opportunity to showcase Tracktown to the world. So this evening, I pose this question to you. In your time in leadership in this community, have you participated in track and field or running? Perhaps it was as a fan, a volunteer, or maybe an athlete. Your involvement underscores the pride that defines Tracktown. Together, we built something extraordinary. Let's continue working together to make Eugene a dynamic hub for track and field and a better place for all residents. Thank you for your support.
Thank you, JB. Our next speakers are Kelly Johnson, followed by Gino Pulverosa.
Hello, Mayor and Council. My name is Kelly Johnson, and I live in Ward Four. I am not a native Oregonian or a native Eugenian, but I choose Eugene to be my home, and it has been a love story ever since I've moved here. And I like to think that I've become Eugene's number-one fan. Some of the reasons why I've made it my chosen home are because this city matched my values. It had beautiful parks, an amazing library, and invested in arts and culture, all things that made a calling to my heart and to my soul and to so many in this room behind me. I know you all are facing really tough budget decisions, and I would just encourage you to listen to the voices in this room that are advocating really hard for all the services that they believe in and make Eugene a place that they want to call home. For several years, I volunteered at the Eugene Public Library, sitting at the information desk with the lovely security guards, and I can't tell you how many people came into that library from all walks of our community, particularly young people. And it's such a safe place for so many in our community, but particularly young people. One of my favorite games to play, as I sat there for my two-hour shift, was to try to count how many steps a young child would take before they just took off running to the children's section. It was usually under three. People love all of our services in Eugene, and I just encourage you to be creative. You've already been so creative in trying to make the cuts as minimal as possible, but please support as much as you can our full spectrum of services here in Eugene. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Our next speakers are Gino Pulverosa, followed by Carolyn Partridge.
Hello, my name is Gino Pulverosa. I live in Ward Three, and I recently wrote an op-ed in Eugene Weekly with a co-organizer of mine named Declan Zupo. And I'm going to read a few parts from it. "In June of 2022, the Oregon Department of Health published a report detailing the exacerbation of mental health issues in Oregon by the climate crisis. Working alongside environmental organizations, tribal stakeholders, and youth from diverse backgrounds, they found resoundingly that climate change is shaping the way that young people understand the world they are to inherit, and not in a good way. Unfortunately, a second Trump term promises a gutting of federal environmental regulations and a blatant disregard for the multi-scaler effects of this crisis. The Trump administration has denied the presence of the anthropogenic climate crisis and, as a consequence, invalidated the experiences of youth who are disproportionately harmed by its effects and whose mental health is suffering in the face of inaction. We know this not only from reviewing existing literature, but more importantly, from our lived experiences. In the face of federal failure, we need local and state action to fortify communities against ongoing climate collapse and to end our complicity in it. As young residents of Eugene, we see the city council's vision of creating positive and powerful ripple effects through climate action. However, the pace and scale of the implementation falls significantly short of what our future requires. Ten years ago, when we could still enjoy entire summers exploring Oregon without worry of extreme heat or wildfire smoke, Eugene passed its Climate Recovery Ordinance 2.0, committing to a 50% reduction in fossil fuel use by 2030. With only five years remaining, our 14% decrease signals an urgent need to accelerate action. Youth have consistently demanded clear, equitable solutions such as electrifying our schools at the 4J and university levels and increasing the gas supplier tax on Northwest Natural to fund low-income residential electrification. Eugene stands at a crossroads. The expertise, solutions, and community are not just present, but are demanding to be heard. Youth are already at this table pushing for building electrification and act..."
Thank you, Gino. Your time is concluded. Our next speakers are Carolyn Partridge, followed by Chuck Arford.
Good evening. My name is Carolyn Partridge, and I live in Ward Two. Since it's the start of a new year, I want to give a special welcome to our new mayor, Karen Knutson, and new city councillor, Eliza Koschinski. And I want to express my appreciation to all of you for your willingness to serve our community by entering into the fray of city government. I have been to enough council meetings to know that you receive a lot of criticism, complaints, and demands, often in areas where you have limited resources to respond. Right now, we have a serious budget shortfall, which must be solved by cutting services or raising revenue. Neither of these are popular, but you must act. If you cut services, you will have even fewer resources to address the issues raised by residents. That's why I support a quote-unquote "fire fee" or something similar to close the gap. And I think with truthful, with truthful explanations, the public would support it. Like a Greek chorus, we local climate activists will continue to remind you that the climate crisis is rapidly escalating and time is of the essence. So please don't lose sight of that reality as you handle the exigencies of the moment. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. Our next speakers are Chuck Arford, followed by Molly Babcock.
Chuck Arford, Ward Eight. Congratulations and welcome, Mayor Knutson and Councillor Koschinski. Thank you all for the work that you do on behalf of all of us, and thank you for keeping this public space open. Fires continue to burn in Los Angeles, the second-largest city in the U.S., where as many, where as many as 12,000 structures burned and 27 people died, others missing. Horrific in scale and intensity, firefighters faced apocalyptic conditions. I acknowledge the courage of all the firefighters who risked their lives and future health through exposure to incredibly harmful particulate matter. Make no mistake, these fires were caused by climate change, heat, and drought. They are another horrific indicator of things to come. World temperatures skyrocketed last year, busting through the critical 1.5 degrees centigrade benchmark. Atmospheric methane and carbon again reached record highs. And this was not only due to increased carbon emissions. Of enormous concern, our Earth is now absorbing less carbon because of feedback loops such as forests burning and dying. All this is worse than the worst-case scenarios. It's starting to look like what scientists call runaway or abrupt climate change. Climate disasters like L.A. and Asheville will increase, doubling over the next few years, increasing tenfold in the next decade or so. Society cannot live without a functioning climate. Also horrific is the fossil fuel industry propaganda and destruction of truth. Even though this is happening right before our eyes, incredibly, many tell us inane lies to mislead us and cover up the truth. I commend you for your courageous but ultimately failed attempt to rein in our local fossil fuel company, Northwest Natural. During a recent work session, Councillor Clark said the council basically declared war on Northwest Natural. I contend it's the opposite. Fossil fuel companies have declared war on us, our community, and our Earth. The above is just part of the story. Next time, we can look more closely at Northwest Natural, their war on truth, and where the bodies are being buried. Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck. Our next speakers are Molly Babcock, followed by Willie Friendman.
Mayor Knutson and City Council, my name is Molly Babcock. I live in Ward One, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to provide testimony. I'm a UO graduate and young professional, worked in environmental communications campaigns for organizations such as the University of Oregon, the Eugene Water and Electric Board, the Mackenzie River Trust, and the Northwest Youth Corps. I'm testifying to express my support for immediate action on local climate justice through building electrification. As Trump begins his term in the White House, it is the responsibility of local progressive governments to pursue substantial fossil fuel reduction and regulation. As our climate changes, our city will experience unprecedented environmental pressure. Last summer was the hottest year on record in our region. In the next 20 years, the wildfire surface area in Lane County will increase over 400%, and our streams will run only half-full. In addition, gas appliances in homes release harmful pollutants like carbon monoxide, nitrogen oxides, and known carcinogens. These additional pressures exacerbate the disparities in health and well-being that already exist in our city and will make local issues of houselessness, addiction, and economic growth all the more unsurmountable in the coming decades. Electrifying homes and businesses is the swift, decisive climate action we need to prevent further damage. Homes and buildings make up 17% of the state's total carbon emissions, topped only by transportation. And according to Synapse Energy Economics, electrifying these homes could save the average family over $150 on their annual electricity bill. If you want to create a flourishing city where the young, the poor, and the vulnerable can live safe, healthy lives, please support the electrification of homes and buildings in line with the city's Climate Recovery Ordinance and Action Plan. Specifically, I ask you to create revenue generation opportunities to transition low-income and other historically marginalized community members to clean, renewable electricity. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you, Molly. Our next speakers are Willie Friendman, followed by Eloise Parish Mueller.
Hi, everyone. My name's Willie, and I live in Trainsong neighborhood. I'd like to start just by thanking anyone here who had a hand in revoking the permit for the USD Clean Fuels Transfer Station. Thanks so much, but unfortunately, that's just the start of the fight. As you've already heard, Union Pacific plans on leasing their yard over to the Central Oregon Pacific Railroad, which will result in less skilled workers and less liability. And on top of that, there's going to be the new fuel transfer station, still in Trainsong, just on the north end. So after all that, it's clear that the railroad is not acting in the city's best interest, and I implore anyone here who has the ability to, to kind of push back in any way that they can on both of those action items. On top of that, it's been in the works for a while to develop the public health industrial development standards that could help prevent these projects from starting from the get-go. We need some sort of way to just not have these happen at all, especially in residential neighborhoods. I'd also like to see that there's more transparency throughout these industrial projects, especially in residential areas, some sort of early warning system for neighbors. It's kind of insane and unacceptable to learn about these projects in the 11th hour and have to scramble to try and prevent them. That's pretty much all I have to say. I'd just like to end with saying, the world is a dumb enough place already. Let's please fund the library.
Our next speakers are Eloise Parish Mueller, followed by Virginia Donahue.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony tonight. My name is Eloise, and I'm a lifelong inhabitant of Ward One in Eugene and a graduate of the University of Oregon with a degree in environmental science. As a longtime climate organizer and involved community member, I was thrilled when the Eugene City Council passed a historic Building Electrification Ordinance, the first city in Oregon to do so, demonstrating a willingness to take real and meaningful action to advance our climate and public health priorities. Despite the rescinding of that specific policy measure, I am here to urge the council to continue making progress towards the city's Climate Recovery Ordinance objectives by creating revenue generation opportunities to increase subsidies and support residents in transitioning their homes to renewable electricity. The city's own extensive outreach and analysis has shown that Eugene wants clean energy and help getting there. Electrifying residences in a region with such a high percentage of renewables in our energy portfolio can significantly reduce our carbon emissions and help us meet our goals. With the start of the staunchly anti-climate new Trump administration at the federal level, it's more critical than ever that we enact effective environmental justice policy and programs at a local level for the safety and health of our community and to contribute to global efforts to curb greenhouse gas emissions and reduce the worst impacts of the climate crisis. The city of Eugene must take this responsibility seriously. Please balance the current budget with sufficient funding to all essential services and then act swiftly to get us back on track for meeting our climate objectives and funding the transition to clean energy in our homes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Eloise. Our next speakers are Virginia Donahue, followed by Sue Walling.
My name is Virginia Donahue. My husband and I live in Ward Two. I'm wearing my raging granny hat to add credibility to my remarks and to show my concern for many issues. However, I do not have a pen for the fabulous people working in Eugene Springfield Fire and Rescue. I am here tonight to highlight the importance of making sure that they are given top priority in the city's unfortunate funding shortfall. I applaud the community's call for supporting our wonderful library, but I wonder if many of our citizens are unaware of the dire straits our firefighters, EMTs, and paramedics are struggling with. According to a report in April from the city of Eugene, in 1981, when Eugene's population was about 106,000, we had 37 firefighters on duty during every shift. Now, with a population not quite doubled at 177,000, guess how many firefighters are on duty per shift? 38! Unacceptable! That is one first responder for every 4,946 residents. That's crazy. Another disturbing statistic is that of the people hired in the past 10 years, 47% have quit, most to work in other cities where the workload is more humane and the pay is better. That's nearly 50%. Unacceptable! Our firefighters are often being force-hired for back-to-back 24-hour shifts, depriving them of the rest needed to recover, the physical, mental, and emotional strength needed to answer the continual calls for help. The proposed method of raising money to help close the budget shortfall is unofficially being called a "fire fee," but 80% of the money will go into the general budget, not directly to the fire department. So this is not an honest label. I worry that the public will lose trust in city government if you are not transparent about how the money will be allocated. This could do long-term damage. I do not oppose... I do not oppose the fee as such. Eugene is a fantastic place to live with parks, police, libraries, and other services all needing our support. Why not call it a "lucky-to-live-here" fee and then continue to do the budget work needed to properly and honestly fund our fire department? I love to-
Virginia, your time is concluded. Our next speakers are Sue Walling, followed by Ty Prouse Zimmerman.
Good evening. I'm Sue Walling, and I live in Ward 7. I'm here on behalf of Curbs, which is Citizens United to Repair Broken Sidewalks. You know, as we talk with people about the sidewalks, it's amazing the stories we hear of their broken bones and sprained ankles and face plants they've taken from just trying to walk on Eugene's sidewalks. One person wrote to us that, quote, "I landed headfirst on my 89th birthday due to an irregular sidewalk. The fall caused a head cut which bled, plus bleeding elbows and knees, and my glasses flew off and were cracked. I lay there on the sidewalk waving my right arm to try to attract a passing walker or motorist for help." There are many stories like this. You know, we've been here before. Back in 2007, in the midst of the Great Recession, we recognized the deteriorating condition of our streets, that it was getting critical, and it was getting more expensive every year to try to fix it. City leaders came together, designed a way to address the problem, and a bond measure to pay for the work. That successful bond measure and the ones that followed have improved the condition of our streets quite a lot. In fact, the streets are good enough that a lot of people find it safer to walk in the street than to try to take their chances on the sidewalks. I'm not suggesting a new bond measure to deal with sidewalks. The current bond measure allocates a little money for pedestrian improvements, but that's being used to fill in missing sidewalks, not to fix the broken ones that we already have. I know the budget is constrained, but we found a way to start fixing the streets in the midst of another economic difficulty period, difficult period. Maybe we can start by using existing funds. For instance, our local gas tax is dedicated to, quote, "reconstruction, repair, maintenance, operation, and preservation of transportation infrastructure." How about using a portion of the gas tax to start fixing sidewalks, like Portland and Kokeal do? That's just one possibility. You'll have a work session in the next few months to discuss sidewalks. We've already met with a number of you, thank you, to toss around ideas, and we'd love to meet with those of you that we haven't connected with yet. We've heard some creative ideas about how to move forward, and staff is working on it, too. Whether we find a way to make the current approach actually work, or we come up with a better and more equitable system, please bring your ideas to that workstation, work session, and let's get started. No one really wants a trip down memory lane, or any other lane.
Thank you, Sue. Our next speakers are Ty Prouse Zimmerman, followed by Tom Peck.
Good evening. I am Ty Prouse Zimmerman. I live in Ward 6. I want to first publicly reiterate my condolences to Councillor Keating and to your family for your loss, and thank you for the poem that you read earlier. I'm also very pleased to welcome Councillor Kosinski and Mayor Knutson to your first general city council meeting. You've had a number of work sessions already, though. You got tossed right into the fire. I have, as Chair of the Budget Committee, of course, been watching very closely your conversations about budget priorities and had a whole lot of thoughts about that, of course. The concept came up of core services, and fire and police were named as core services, which, of course, is 100% true. Those are fundamentally core to what we do in this city. And from that, I've been mulling community meetings and visioning events and dot exercises that I know all of us have done in innumerable times, where people talk about what matters most to them in Eugene as a framing for what is core. And we've heard a lot of it already tonight. We've heard people talk about libraries, about parks. These are core services. I don't think there's any doubt in my mind. And then just yesterday, at another community meeting, a neighbor of mine actually was singing Councillor Evans's praises because of a pothole he helped get fixed on our street years ago. And she was still talking about it yesterday. Public Works is a core service. I don't think there's any way to dispute that. And we're in the midst of a housing crisis, and we have incredibly ambitious goals of what we want to build. I don't think there's any way to say planning's not a core service. And of course, we couldn't do any of those other things without the work of central services. So I just want to think, if we end up cutting, and we may have to, because we're in a very difficult financial space, with or without new revenue, we're going to have some cuts in this upcoming cycle. But I think no matter what we cut, we will be cutting core services. And I think it's worth looking at it from that perspective when you have to make a very difficult financial decision about how many cuts to endure. Any cuts are going to be painful, more will be more painful versus new revenue that also has a lot of downsides and will also be a pain point, so.
Thank you, Ty. Our next speakers are Tom Peck, followed by Catherine Hunt.
Mayor Knutson, Councillors, thank you for your time. My name is Tom Peck. I'm the co-chair of the Friendly Area Neighborhood. I'm speaking for myself. I just want to say I'm in support of the fire service fee, very in support of it. In 1991, I lived in Berkeley and watched the Berkeley Oakland Fire burn 2,800 homes. I moved to Grass Valley. I was in 2017, watching the Paradise Fire and saw the aftermath of that. In 2020, I was living in Eugene, and we watched the Holiday Farm Fire almost burn to Springfield. Had it, the wind blown another few hours, it would have been in Eugene. Wildfire is a major risk to our community. There is no way we can't pass this fee to support our fire department and as well as the other services. So I don't think it's a matter of whether we can pass it or not. We need to reach out to the neighborhood associations and garner support behind this. And I, for one, and several other people in neighborhood associations are very concerned about the passage of this. So please have the strength to pass it, and we will support you. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Our next speakers are Catherine Hunt, followed by Peter Chaberek.
Good evening. I'm a raging granny, but tonight I'm speaking as a grandmother of two very special twin grandchildren. The library has been a lifesaver for them, a safe place for youth to meet and make friends. They also love to read. So they have been in tweens. Tweens is children nine years age, up to 12. Now they're in teens because they're 13. So they meet once a week with other young people from our community and do crafts and all kinds of activities, and there's a whole list of activities that they are able to do that I'm leaving in case you would like to look it over. So there are, these are, these are just two programs offered by our great library. I remember when their father was a young boy, going to the old library. We'd go down there, and we couldn't afford records and other, it was mostly records at that time, but we could borrow them from the library. And so they discovered and heard the music from, especially I was interested in the music created in the, in the United States. So they had a great time in the downtown library at that time. So I would encourage you to please keep funding the library so that there will be new books on the shelves and programs will continue. Thank you for serving our community, all of you.
Thank you, Catherine. Our next speakers are Peter Chaberek, followed by Susan Barnhart. Is Peter in the room? All right, I will move on to our next speaker, Susan Barnhart, and call Peter one more time.
So nice to see you all. Thank you so much for giving us an opportunity to speak, and thank you so much for your I live in Ward 7. I'm a retired social worker and a full-time peace, justice, and environmental activist. I know the city's severely strapped for money, but with President Trump in office and with his policies, our country is really under attack. And we must all fight back. Please do all you can to protect the vulnerable immigrants, people of color, gay people, to keep us all moving forward to mitigate the climate crisis by lowering the carbon footprint of Eugene. All of us, you city council, you mayor, city manager, all of us have to do our part to leave a livable planet for our children and our grandchildren. The world's burning up, it's flooding, we all need to do our part. Please work with 350 Eugene and Fossil Free Eugene to get back on track to meet the goals in the Eugene Climate Recovery Ordinance. Thank you for listening to all of us. Please do your part to save our planet.
Thank you, Susan. One more call for Peter, Peter Chaberek. All right, no Peter present. Our next speakers are Dylan Plummer, followed by Erin Frank.
Mayor Knutson and members of the Eugene City Council, my name is Dylan Plummer. I'm a resident of Ward 2, an environmental advocate, and an elected union leader. I want to start by offering my councillor, Councillor Keating, my condolences for the passing of his mother, and a thank you for that beautiful poem. I also want to congratulate Mayor Knutson and Councillor Kosinski on your new roles. I'm here to testify on behalf of the Sierra Club. With the inauguration of Donald Trump and his fossil fuel-funded anti-climate administration, local leadership is more important than ever. In his first week in office, Trump has already signed a host of executive orders intended to dismantle existing climate and environmental policy. He has withdrawn the US from the Paris Climate Accord, the international treaty establishing greenhouse gas emissions reductions targets worldwide. And this is just the beginning. If Eugene is to meet its climate recovery ordinance goals and to do its part in the international effort to mitigate the worst impacts of the climate crisis, we need bold and decisive action from this body. Please work with your constituents and the rich ecosystem of community-based organizations in Eugene to develop policies to generate climate-specific revenue and to invest in the transition off of fossil fuels for our community. Along these lines, I will submit policy recommendations from the Fossil Free Eugene Coalition, along with a written version of this testimony via email. Your jobs are more important than they have ever been. Help us to help you to ensure that Eugene remains a climate leader and a progressive leader even as we go backwards at the federal level. I additionally want to voice my personal support for passing a fee to support services, including the public library. I want to support protecting migrants by refusing to cooperate with ICE, fighting for LGBTQ rights, and specifically trans rights as they're under attack, and supporting union workers and community safety in the Trainsong Neighborhood by opposing the bad actions of the railroad and the various projects that have been mentioned. Thank you all so much for your service, and I look forward to stepping up into this moment with you all to fight for our city and for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Dylan. Our next speakers are Erin Frank, followed by Roman Anderson.
Good evening, Mayor Knutson and members of the city council. My name is Erin Frank, and I live in the Trainsong Neighborhood. And I would like to take the opportunity to thank the city members of council and everybody else involved for revoking the USD Clean Fuels zoning verification for the transfer station. I know Trainsong is a small and easy-to-miss neighborhood, but we greatly appreciate being kept in mind as decisions that will affect our health are being made, even if you are unsure where our neighborhood is. So thank you for that decision change. With that said, I do feel like our neighborhood is still subject to further decisions by the city that will have a negative impact on our health and community. Trainsong would like to see the public health overlay zone that has previously been discussed by our city council members and previous mayor finally come to fruition, and am urging Mayor Knutson to take that seriously and make that a priority. I would also like to strongly urge the city to oppose the lease of the Union Pacific Rail Yard to Corp. Right now, we need all the protection from the city that we can get to protect us from these unsafe and heavy polluting companies. Trainsong is one of the last affordable neighborhoods in Eugene. We're talking about subsidized and affordable housing for folks, but where are we going to put them when they're able to move on? If we only have high-end houses and low-end houses, seems like a big loss. So keep that in mind when you're making your decisions about the city and our neighborhood. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Erin. Our next speakers are Roman Anderson, followed by Fiona Gledhill. Is there a Roman Anderson in the room? All right, we're skipping Roman for now. I will call him once more. Our next speaker is Fiona Gledhill. Is there a Fiona Gledhill in the room? Okay, moving on to Karen Michelle.
Hi, I'm just returning to the US after 11 years. Thank you for letting me speak. Mr. Keating, I did want to say to you, beyond my condolences, you said that you had a mother you didn't deserve. I have a sneaking suspicion she wouldn't agree with that. I think she would say she got just the children she wanted. I'm here, coming back. I have a 23-year-old daughter in Argentina who was terrified of this country, and I'm asking, I actually did a research and chose Eugene, and I'm absolutely thrilled that I did. Nevertheless, my question is, every hour, we see something more despicable. I'm stunned to learn that it is now legal to discriminate against black people, and Target and Walmart have both signed on to that. I'm stunned that he is trying to pull citizenship from your native tribes here and is going to eliminate all funding for any public schools that don't buy his Bibles. So obviously, I think we're all very, very frightened. My question is, before coming here, we saw a lot of states say, we're not going to put up with this. And I guess I'm asking, is that the position here? Is there somebody here who's going to say to the owner of the Target on 11th Avenue, you may not discriminate against somebody because of the color of their skin? Is there somebody who's going to say, we're not buying your "Made in China" Christian Bible books? Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. One last call for Roman Anderson or Fiona Gledhill. Not seeing those. Moving on, our next speakers are Steve Gilbert, followed by Linda Kelly.
I'm Steve Gilbert, and born and raised in Bethel, my wife as well. We've raised seven children here in Bethel. First thing I'd like to say is absolutely, Union Pacific shouldn't be allowed to unload their liabilities on their properties. I also would like to say that I do believe in truth in labeling as well. I have a different perspective on Eugene's budget crisis and how we got here and regarding the proposed fire service fee. There were 1,600 homeless people in Lane County in 2018. Eugene and Lane County developed a TAC plan to address this crisis. The first casualty of this plan was my Bethel neighborhood. As the city and the county chose to locate all homeless services here in Bethel, now Eugene's homeless population is growing at two times the national average, and we have the highest homeless population per capita in the entire country. The second casualty of the TAC was to our public safety. Our police do not have the staff or the resources to respond to the multitude of crimes and issues that this growth has caused. What have we lost? Property crimes are no longer investigated or prosecuted. We heard that earlier tonight. Drug use is widely tolerated. Likewise, our fire and EMT. All these services have been overwhelmed. Here's a key point. 25%, at least, that's a number from last year, of all fire, police, and EMT calls are for homeless. That's a full, you know, one out of four calls for a population that's 5,000 people in Eugene. Eugene is now known across the country as a good place to be homeless. Chronically homeless people are moving here. Our first responders know this. They see it every day. Third casualty of Eugene's unwavering commitment to these programs is the city's very own budget. As a cost of these-
Thank you, Steve. Your time is concluded. Our next speakers this evening are Linda Kelly, followed by Skip Waddell.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council, and welcome. Mayor Knutson and my Ward 1 councillor Kosinski. I did not write anything up for tonight, but I just thought I would like to bring something to your attention. I don't know if you've heard of it, but- I don't know if you've heard of it, but there is something called the Oregon Coalition for an Environmental Rights Amendment. I don't know if any of you have heard of this. The acronym is OSHA. And basically, it's a comprehensive environmental bill that will put the right to a healthy environment into our state constitution. And that's the key piece. Because basically, as a threat of degraded federal protections rise on the horizon, it's imperative that Oregon shield itself as soon and as effectively as possible. And this is one way to do it. Montana has this kind of a law on its books. It was challenged by state court and it held. So Hawaii also has another similar piece of legislation that is basically focused on transportation per se. But just with what's going on on the federal level, we have to focus on the state level. And this is one really important piece that will safeguard other programs, like our climate protection program, et cetera, et cetera. The number is, it's a Senate joint resolution and it's called Senate Joint Resolution Number 28. And I just wanted to get it on to your radar because I think this is really important to support. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Linda. Our next speakers are Skip Waddell, followed by Brett Deeden.
Hello. I'm here today to urge the council to implement the public health overlay zone to ensure neighborhoods are not vulnerable to industrial pollution. Thank you again for your time and willingness to explore innovative solutions that make our city better for everyone. I'm confident that with your support, we can take this critical step towards a healthier, stronger community. Thank you.
Thank you, Skip. Our next speakers are Brett Deeden, followed by Tomoko Sekaguchi.
You're almost there. Excuse me. My name is Brett Deeden. I am the newly-elected president for the local 851 Lane Professional Firefighters. I want to start off tonight by saying the firefighters, the local 851, stand in solidarity with other unions in Eugene, particularly Ask Me. Our fight for protection of our community, for better protection of our community is a value we both share. At the same time, recognize our work in protecting union jobs is our number-one priority. Today is also Firefighter Appreciation Day here in Oregon, and I want to thank you all for recognizing the work that we do in these past few work sessions. The recent discussion about the fires in Los Angeles hits close to home. Our crew sent down there shortly after the fires began, just returned this last Saturday, spending 14 days, 14 challenging days on the front lines. There are striking similarities between those fires and the ones we've experienced here. The 50 to 70 mile an hour winds driving the L.A. fires are the same conditions we faced in September of 2020. That night, five mega fires erupted, burning close to a million acres in just a few days. The Beechey Creek Fire just outside of Salem spread at an astonishing rate of 2.66 acres a second. 2.66 acres a second. Imagine that kind of speed tearing through your community. Fire is one of the few forces of nature we try to control, and our best success comes from attacking it quickly. Once a fire grows too large, we're at the mercy of wind, topography, and fuel. Unfortunately, our department barely has the resources to meet the current baseline needs of our community. We run out of medic units almost daily and our fire engines are stretched thin. We rank 72nd in the U.S. for the number of house fires. We have just 0.89 firefighters per thousand people, where the national average is nearly double that at 1.72 per thousand. When it comes to a proposed fire fee, I still have questions. We need long-term funding and stability. One squad is not enough. It's a drop in the bucket. It's been talked about earlier tonight, but since 1981, we've seen a 1,000% increase in our call volume. We've only added one firefighter in that time. By comparison, the national average, the national standard for a high-rise fire calls for 43 firefighters. We don't even have enough firefighters in Eugene to meet the standards for many of our downtown buildings. We have a fire where that happened there. We need growth, we need governance, and we need long-term, stable funding to protect the community effect.
Thank you, Brett. Our next speakers are Tomoko Sekaguchi, followed by Jim New.
Mayor Knutson, City Council, and City Manager Maderi. Good evening and thank you for allowing this testimony. My name is Tomoko Sekiguchi. I reside in Ward Two. I urge you to take immediate steps to address the climate crisis by prioritizing building electrification and dramatically reducing our dependence on fossil fuels. To highlight the power of natural gas, one therm of natural gas, about 100 cubic feet, holds about 100 million joules of energy comparable to 10 days of human labor. In winter, the average home in Eugene might use 50 to 80 thermes each month, representing a vast reservoir of energy. That's pretty mind-blowing. Harnessing so much potential just to heat water, cook meals, or warm drafty structures when simpler, non-fossil alternatives exist squanders a finite resource that we should be conserved for applications with no feasible substitutions, such as certain emergency or medical needs. With the new federal administration reversing climate policies, cities like Eugene must lead. Our Climate Recovery Ordinance commits us to cutting half, cutting half, cutting in the half of the fossil fuels by 2030 and decarbonizing buildings by 2045. Achieving these targets demands urgent electrification strategies. I urge you to create funding strategies that support low-income and marginalized communities, ensuring fair access to clean energy solutions. Thank you for your consideration of this call to action. I appreciate your leadership and I urge you to protect the city's future by supporting electrification and conserving precious fossil fuels for indispensable purposes. Thank you.
Thank you, Tomoko. Our next speaker is Jim New, followed by Jack Dodson.
Mayor, Council, City Manager, my name is Jim New. I live in Ward Seven. Whether it's the United Nations Climate Change Conference, the International Court of Justice in the Hague, or the City of Eugene City Council, it seems decision-makers cannot adopt measures or policy to reduce carbon emissions from the burning of fossil fuels, which is intensifying more and frequent catastrophic weather events. Inaction is becoming costly. Just ask the folks in Asheville, North Carolina, and Damascus, Virginia, who are homeless, jobless, and struggling to recover from the effects of almost 40 inches of rain from Hurricane Helene and damage costs of $53 billion. Or the recent fires in L.A., where thousands of homes burned and several dozen have lost their lives. Eugene is one atmospheric river away from flooding and is unfathomable the impact 30 inches of rain would have on the confluence of two rivers. Building energy is one of Eugene's largest sources of carbon emissions. And in July, 16 regional organizations suggested in a letter to the city council these reduction actions. Establish low nitrogen oxide emissions standards for gas appliances. Dedicate revenue to subsidize low-income residential electrification. Prohibit expansion of gas mains within the city right of way. And establish climate pollution fees to be paid for gas installations in new residential and commercial construction. None of these actions require establishing a fire fee, a bond, or a measure. They require communication, resolve, and political will. When it comes to budget, we can walk and chew gum at the same time. We can work on multiple problems and issues at once. Polar explorer Robert Swan writes, "The greatest threat to our planet is the belief that someone else will save it." The inaction of decision-makers near and far in reducing carbon emissions is now the greatest threat to our planet. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Due to our 90-minute public comment period, Jack Dodson is our final speaker.
Mayor Knutson and Eugene City Council. My name is Jack Dodson. I live in Ward Three and I'm a student at the University of Oregon. I'm testifying to call on the council to take immediate steps in support of climate justice. 2024 was the first year I was old enough to vote, and I'm happy I cast my first vote here in Eugene. For my whole life, I've been watching the climate crisis unfold and have been unable to vote for politicians who actually care about this planet. I've been advocating for climate action for years, but I always looked forward to the day when I could directly partake in deciding who would lead us. Unfortunately, the man America elected to be our president will not be a leader. Only a week into his term, he has rolled back bedrock environmental protections and streamlined the destruction of our planet and the wonderful life it holds. His environmental policy is pure climate destruction. And as climate disasters worsen by the day, we need strong local action to make up for the absence of action in the Capitol. I urge the city council to prioritize local climate action by supporting the electrification of homes and buildings in line with the city's Climate Recovery Ordinance and Action Plan. Specifically, I urge you to focus on creating revenue generation opportunities to increase subsidies and support to transition low-income and other historically marginalized communities, community members to renewable energy. We have already experienced significant delays that prevented our community from benefiting from the climate, health, and economic benefits that come from electrification. I urge you to take swift action to show your constituents that local politics matter and to protect our climate and public health for the sake of my future and the future of other youth. We do not have a leader in the White House, so we must have leaders in Eugene. Will you be our leaders? Will you lead the way to a better future? Or will you choose the road of inaction and become complicit in the climate crimes of our federal government? The choice is yours. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Mayor, that was our final speaker.
Thank you all. I now close the public comment period and will ask if there are any comments from City Council. Counselor Keating.
Thanks, Mayor. Happy to kick it off. Thanks to everyone who participated in public comment tonight and powerful words to close public comment. I want to congratulate Brett on his election as president of local 851 and thank all first responders, especially our local firefighters, those who went down south to fight the inferno in Southern California on this firefighter appreciation day. Thank you for your service. I want to recognize Linda for bringing up Senate Joint Resolution 28. And I'm proud to announce that Senator Floyd Przansky, my boss, Senator James Manning, are co-chief sponsors of the bill that would create an Oregon Environmental, the Oregon Coalition for Environmental Rights. And our very own House District Eight Representative Lisa Fragula is a regular sponsor as well. The, let's see, JB Carne of Ward Two. Thank you for proposing the question, how have you participated in track and field? And unlike the track star mayor to my left, I have not participated in track and field. I was a baseball and soccer guy and an announcer for hockey and baseball. But I did, in 2022, Mayor Venice deployed me to be council's ambassador to the Ethiopian delegation at the World Athletic Championships. You may remember, not so far from here, the Eugene Riverfront Festival is a 10-day festival that ran mid-July 2022. It was free to all and it was amazing time and a wonderful experience. And I hope we can replicate that energy come the next World Athletic U20 Championships. They'll be held here in Eugene, August 4th through 9, 2026. Shameless plug. Thank you for joining us tonight. Oh, 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 oh. And thank you to all who shared your condolences and kind words. On behalf of my whole family, it means so much. Thank you.
Counselor Yay.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank everyone who came out tonight to talk about the things that you value, the things that you're worried about, the things that you're scared for in the future. I think one thing that we can all agree on, no matter where we are in the political spectrum or how we're thinking about the things going forward, is that we're better at making decisions together. And I completely agree with our last speaker. I think politics at the local level is where we do our best work because we're here, all together, in the same room. And you don't get that at higher levels, right? You don't have those connections to people that it's sometimes hard. But ultimately, I think we do our best work here. And I know my colleagues are ready and we're a good team. And so no matter how hard it is, I think we're in a good place as a city. And I look forward to working with all of you and I hope you keep coming and keep pushing us and keep telling us what you need and what you want. Because it's going to be a hard road, but we're on it together.
Any other comments from council this evening? If with none, I will just add, I'll echo Counselor Yay's appreciation to all of you and others who joined us this evening for public comment. Your input, your feedback, sharing what you are passionate about and concerned about and the paths that you see forward for us as a community is an incredibly important part of this enterprise. And we are grateful for your time and the energy that you dedicate to this. Please continue talking with your community about all the issues that you raised tonight to us and that you heard raised by other speakers this evening that you thought were of interest. I do think that that also is an important part of our path forward. And we are just going to stay on this course together and walk on into the future. So with that, I will say that I'm going to now close at 9:47. The January 27, 2025 City Council meeting, we are adjourned.